I fell out.
Yeah, see that'll just keep the podium one.
And this car rolled over and it was like, yeah.
Test one, two?
That must mean we're ready. Okay. All right, so then I'm calling the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the, why do I never know the date? The May 8th, 2025 meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Zoning Board of Appeals. We are, excuse me, a volunteer advisory board appointed by the city commission. Would staff please conduct the roll call?
And we'll start with the far side. Sylvester?
Here.
Work?
Here.
Holder?
Here.
Harrington?
Here.
McReynolds?
Here.
Han?
Here.
Excellent. All right, so tonight for each of the public hearings, public comments will be accepted during the times indicated on tonight's meeting agenda. Community members may call 888-382-9556 during the public comment period where they will enter a queue and will be prompted to offer their comments in turn. Callers will be commenting live. They are not able to leave a recorded message. There's lots of seats in the room though, so if you guys want to come down in person, you can. All right, so are there any announcements or changes to the original agenda?
One announcement, when we get to discussion and action items, which is E, I'm going to be asking for volunteers for an interview committee. We do have one applicant right now for the vacant alternate seat. So I just want to be prepared to be able to hold interviews once I get another application in. Thank you.
Excellent. I'll put that on my agenda then. All right, so first thing we must do is acceptance of last month's minutes. Are there any changes that need to be made to the minutes?
No.
I saw none either. All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve.
Excellent. A second?
I second that motion.
Any discussion needed? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, that's a voice vote approves it. All right, so this is the procedure for tonight's public hearings. For each of the requests, the secretary will read the application into the public record. The applicant or the representative will then have 10 minutes to provide their comments. He'll step up to the microphone, of course, say your name, sign in, all that good stuff. You'll have 10 minutes to speak. I generally say 10 minutes goes by fast when you're at the microphone, so please get to the point. You don't want to waste it with 10 minutes of introductions. Following that, the public is invited to comment. At the podium, again, you'll sign in, you'll state your name and address on, for the record. You'll probably be asked to repeat it and re spell it for us. And then you have three minutes to present your comments as well. Again, three minutes goes by fast. Those in favor of the proposal will be invited to speak first, those opposed second. And then we will hear any call-in comments that may be out there. After this, we close the public hearing and the board will then conduct what is called a finding of fact. This is where the board states what they feel are the facts of the request. The board must approve the finding of fact, or a finding of fact. Therefore, the first vote you hear is not a ruling on the request, but on accepting the finding of fact. If you want to cheer and say yea, it passed, you may, but it means nothing necessarily to your request. Following this, the board discusses the request itself in order to determine a ruling and on that finding of fact. During this period, the board reserves the right to ask questions of persons who have already spoken, even after the public comment has portioned, or portion has closed. We talk amongst each other, we ask Pete questions, we ask Charlie questions occasionally. Once that discussion has ended, the board will move on to a roll call vote of approving or denying the applicant's request. Please be aware that a full board consists of six members with four votes required to grant a non-use variance or a use variance. All right. Will the secretary please read the first application into the record?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Sir. Oh, you're right. I got it, you're right. We talked about this. We don't have the first applicant, so we're obviously going to take the second one first. And, well, since number one is late, they're going third, no matter what happens at this point. This is, this is why you'd be on time, right? We'll start with number two.
Okay. All righty. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals by Parwinder Singh. Did I say it correct? Oh, not done yet, I'm not done yet.
I mean, you can step up if you want, but she's still going to read it.
Did I say your name correctly?
No. This is Parwinder Singh, but I haven't contacted him.
Okay.
Parwinder Singh, okay. Um, okay, the applicant, okay, so this is ZBA number 2505-05-06 at 121 East Patterson Street. Mr. Singh is requesting a variance from Appendix A, Chapter 4, Sections 4.3, J. 7, to allow for an outdoor temporary sales use for food trailer to operate in Lesman's Market parking lot from May 9th, 2025 to November 9th, 2029, for six months. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I assume you've signed in, so you can go ahead and say your name and go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Inderjit Singh. I-N-D-E-R-J-I-T. Last name Singh, S-I-N-G-H. And we got a, we got like temporary permit over there right now for 30 days. And we talked to city and everything, they are saying we need to extend this for six months and then we can do like permanent. We need a, we want to do it like, you know, site plan review in that time. If we got like six months temporary use permit. So we want to extend this for six months, that's why we are requesting to, you know, approval for six months.
Okay. And that's to have a permanent food truck on site?
Yeah, this, the food truck is already on site. We are operating it, we got all the licenses, like from fire marshal, from food, healthcare, everything is approved permanently, but only this, this thing we are pending right now. So if we can get it for the next six months.
Excellent. Can you spell your first name again?
Inderjit, I-N-D-E-R-J-I-T.
Excellent, thank you. You can sit down if you'd like, unless somebody else from your team wanted to say anything. Otherwise, Pete?
Actually, and what was mentioned is he does have some letters of support.
Oh, yeah, I have some letter of support, like my customers signed and they gave us like all the phone number and stuff. I have like a four of them. They asked me as many I can get. If you guys want it, I can get like 20 of them, 30 of them, you know, like all the people really liking, we just adding like Indian food there and some American like mixed up. So a lot of customers are liking here, so, yeah.
So why don't you bring those forward to me and then like we talked about, if you can email the?
Okay, yeah. I will email to you and with the addresses. And I got a sign and phone number, you need a full name and addresses, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll pass. I will pass these around so the board can see them. But basically, there is four letters of support. I just, you know, they're from property owners nearby and customers, but they don't have addresses with them. So I'm going to get those that, you know, emailed to me so that we can put those in the record, so.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much. Pete, did staff have any comments on this?
Yeah, so just some background on this. So the, the food trailer, I believe, showed up on the property in January?
Yes.
In January. And Mr. Singh was unaware of the approval processes at the city, which is a number of them. So he's been very patient, working through all the steps, because to have a food truck or food trailer, you have to have your food service license from the health department, you need to have a safety certificate from the fire marshal, and you need to have zoning approval. And, and so we had to work through those things to start with. As far as zoning approval goes, administratively, we can approve a food truck or a food trailer on a, in a commercial parking lot for up to 30 days per calendar year. And the plan all along was to make this a permanent addition to the Lesman's Market parking lot. So, you know, so we have worked with the applicant on what the process steps look like. You know, that, that is allowed under our ordinance to take a, a food truck or food trailer and make it a permanent addition to the commercial uses on a property, but it has to go through site plan review. And as we've talked about before, the site plan review process takes a minimum of three months. So what we did was we worked through just getting all the approvals in place with the fire marshal and, and the zoning side for the temporary approval, which got them 30 days so they could at least open for business. And then they said, well, you know, what do we do after the 30 days while we're trying to go through site plan review? And that's where the Zoning Board of Appeals comes in. So they're here tonight to request a, essentially a time extension to continue to operate this business for six months while they pursue site plan approval to make it a permanent use on the property.
Thank you. He can have a seat again, Mr. Singh, thank you. So I will now open the public hearing, the, I will now open the public hearing, invite those to speak in favor of the request. If there's anybody in the house, there are none? Anybody wish to step up and speak against it? Again, none. Then call-in comments.
I'm checking right now to see if we have any call-in comments for this case. The phone line is open and we've got no callers waiting. So there are no outside comments for this case tonight.
Thank you very much. All right, so then I will close the public hearing portion. Who is doing the finding of fact on this particular? Tony, would you like to, well, do we need any further discussion on the finding of fact portion before we make that? Probably not, because we usually don't. All right, then you can make the motion for the finding of fact.
I mean, I move, I move, I move that the finding of fact for 121 East Patterson Street shall include all information included in the notice of public hearing detailed April 23rd, 2025, and the agenda package staff provided for this request. There were 60 notices sent out, no responses. There was four letter of support that we seen that was signed. No, as we said, no outside comments. There was no extra documentation besides the four letters of support. The timing of the site plan review process, which will take longer than approval for a temporary use, which is ending at 30 days as one of the situations happening. The plan review process takes up to two to three months, which is more than the 30 days that they have. They will, they will likely like to be there in the spot temporarily during the review process. That's all I have for the reviewing of the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
Thank you. All right, so now we can have discussion on that, I think. No, we can just vote on it. All those in favor, do we need a discussion on the finding of fact? I know I already asked that before, but probably not. So all those in favor of adopting that specific finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. All right, so we've adopted that finding of fact. All right. Now we need somebody to make a motion regarding the, there's a lot of motions and seconds in here. For a motion and a second regarding the request, if somebody would like to make that.
I motion to approve the request.
Thank you. Is there a second? I heard Tony give it.
I second that.
There we go. All right, so now we can discuss for reals. So my question, I think most of my questions Pete probably answered. And in general, a food truck is allowed on this sort of property as long as they go through the site plan review and meet the other requirements about fire marshal and whatever. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Yeah, yeah, so it'll be looked at, yeah, I guess, and I tried to put that under the, you know, special circumstances was really the timing of, you know, them getting through site plan review, yet still wanting to actively use the food trailer in the, you know, during that process.
And, and I'm assuming that we, you're not, you're not foreseeing any site plan review or other problems with it, then?
I'm not at this point in time. And, and the property is being kept clean and there's been no complaints, so everything's, you know, off to a very good start.
So after the site plan review, they can have it for permanent?
Yeah, and I, I think if I took from what the report said and what you were saying before, sounds like the applicant is, is working along with that. He's not like being drug along with it, kicking and screaming. This is more of like an actively trying to, to live up to what the ordinance or whatever is required.
Correct, correct. They're working on a layout for the plan right now, which they'll submit with the, the pre-application step of site plan review.
And so assuming we approve the six-month extension, this could finish site plan review August, September, something like that, and then that'll just be it, he can be permanently, that can be permanently there?
Yeah, yeah, and then those variants will, you know, will no longer be necessary.
Excellent, thank you. Did anybody else have any other questions, discussion that we needed to have on it?
I do have a question. Pete, is this a new tactic to use a six-month variance during this site plan review process? And is that because of the slowdown that occurs in site plan?
I, I wouldn't say.
Is that a common practice in the past?
I mean, it's, we, in fact, this, this board has granted time extensions for temporary uses in the past. In fact, we may have others this year because there seems to be a lot more food truck and food trailer activity. Usually we look at, you know, the track record of, of that, you know, that particular temporary business and the location they're at and make sure that it's, you know, it's really not going to cause an undue hardship to allow them more than just 30 days at that particular site. And, you know, so we, we have looked closely at this particular site, and obviously we've sent out a number of public hearing notices and not gotten any, you know, negative responses. So, so, but yeah, sorry, to answer your question, you know, it, you know, we, we've done this before. It's, you know, it definitely is helpful in this instance, you know, to give more time to a temporary use that is, you know, they're, they're following the city processes, but the site plan review process is just, there's, there's no way to speed that up.
Thank you.
I mean, I think we did one a couple of years ago on a barbecue trailer up on Cork, but I don't think it was like intended to be a permanent thing, if I remember correctly. But we have like approved that sort of thing before, just never, not necessarily for this particular instance.
That's what struck me as interesting, this is being used as a bridge toward a permanent use. And I, and I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
But it's interesting.
Yeah, well, and it's, and it, it makes, you know, so it allows staff, you know, the allowance of 30 days, you know, to approve a temporary use, but it makes any temporary use that is going to be in place more than 30 days have to go through this more involved process. So, so it's, you know, it's, it's a check and balance, so to speak.
Yeah, because site plan review is no, is no picnic.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did one for the COVID testing and for the barbecue one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we did, I think, a food truck on Portage, Portage Street, just north of I-94. I think that was a four-month approval, so, yeah, yeah, so there, there is, there's other examples, you're right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion questions at all? No, I, I'll at least say for the record then that I think that the staff report is appropriate and all their findings are appropriate. Under the various factors or standards that we have to apply, I don't really have any quibbles with any of them, especially in light of the, once it passes, site plan review, which is anticipated, it will be approved anyway, with or without us. So that's where I stand on that. Anybody else want to take a stroll down or give your opinion? You don't have to. All right, no other discussion then? Pete, you want to take the vote?
We'll start at this end with Han.
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Holder?
I'm a yes.
Work?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Shout out to Boom Boom.
I believe that, I believe that's six, nothing in favor. The temporary, the request is granted. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, we're moving on to item number three on our agenda.
Yes, yes, you can.
You can stay if you want, or you can leave, it's up to you.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have a gentleman that just came in, I don't know if he's related to the application, the first one on Reed Street?
Well, when you say Reed Street, both of these are Reed.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 433.
You've got Reed Street and Reed Avenue. I believe he's talking about Deer Hunter.
I'm going to probably correct this, you Pete, this is, this is a zoning type of meeting today, correct?
Yes, yeah, specifically for the cases that are on the agenda?
But I don't know about the cases, but this is my concern. I want to place my condition here at the level of wisdom.
If we are a zoning board of appeals, we hear appeals that are brought from the zone, that are looking to appeal a denial of a use essentially of a property. It's not an open forum necessarily with open time for public comment on, in the same way that the city commission or the zoning board is, we are the Zoning Board of Appeals, which Charlie can explain more in depth, but if it's just you want to read a statement in general, then no, we don't have a space for that. But if it's regarding one of the two remaining applicants and you're speaking in favor or against them, then I'm happy to hear it.
I employ you as office manager for time, all I did was, when the next meeting was going to be, I said, oh, thanks, so I had no idea how to do this.
Jesus, keep us safe, Father God.
I told Peter to hide that out and then come back, but you're not just fine.
All right, if the, if the, if what you're wanting to speak on is say you don't like a particular piece of zoning, or you want it changed, or something to that effect, this is, this is not the board for that. That is a different board, and I think Pete might be able to say which one it is. And I think Pete might be able to say which one it is.
Yeah, and I, and I can provide you my business card and you can contact me and we can, we can.
You also work with the maximum proceeds also?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm glad we get that. I'll come back with my concerns, but I'll be okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I will get more.
No, I just, I didn't want to make you sit through.
No, that's.
Yes, please, please judge me.
Call and leave me a voicemail or an email and.
I would definitely do that and sit down on the next one. I appreciate you telling me.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. You have a good night.
Can I ask, what is the next on the agenda? Maybe I'll have to listen to it or?
Well, yeah, you can sit. It's, if you, if you want, she's going to read it out right now.
Okay.
You can go ahead and sit down.
Yep.
Thank you, Pete.
Welcome.
An app.
We're doing number three.
Number, okay. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance has been filed with the zoning board of appeals by Christopher Patch, ZBA number twenty-five dash oh-five dash oh-seven at 132 Reed Avenue. Mr. Patch is requesting the use, is, excuse me, is requesting a use variance from Appendix A, Chapter Four, Section 4.1, to authorize the use of the three dwelling units on the premises as short-term rental units. Where short-term rental, where, excuse me, sorry. Short-term rentals, days of less than thirty days are not permitted in the RM fifteen zone district. Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification of the properties.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Let me get to the correct spot in my notes. Thank you. Would the applicant there like to come up and speak in favor of their application? Make sure and sign in and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Christopher Patch, C-H-R-I-S-T-O-P-H-E-R-P-A-T-C-H. I'm requesting a variance for my property in 132 Reed Ave. The hardship was given to me. I, well, I acquired it and I see that there's a very narrow stairway and steep stairwell. It's very difficult to move standard furniture like beds, couches, appliances. And this makes it functionally unsuitable for new people who move in and long-term rentals. What I'm trying to do is get a pre-furnished, short-term rental. And that would be more of a solution, I think, in this case scenario. This is easier to manage. This allows the property to be used reasonably productively without structure changes. This was not self-created issue. This is an issue that I got when I got the property. And I'll go over the dimensions here in a bit. Yeah, I haven't made any modifications to it. There will be no impact to the neighborhood. There are no exterior changes will be made. We will follow Calmezur short-term rental guidelines, such as licensing inspections, quiet hours. A twenty-four seven local contact will be available for, for neighbors or city officials. It is located on a busier street. And there will be, to my best ability, no attempts at disruption of traffic. The consistency with zoning purposes. This will remain residential in nature. Keep the building occupied, cleaned and maintained. This is also a property that I owner occupied. I just moved into it as well. Supports economic fatality, housing flexibility and responsible ownership. When I moved in there too, I mean, to get even get a couch into the unit I'm in, I had to take the couch and hand it to the balcony and shovel the couch up to the balcony. It was a three-man process and it's something that's not fairly safe. You can see in the pictures that there is holes in the walls from trying to use the narrow stairway, adjust furniture and to get into those narrow doorways. Simply asking for a chance to use this building in a way that matches its structure, short-term rental for units that can be used in long-term without changing the neighborhood or avoiding the city require, oh, any, without avoiding, without avoiding any city requirements. Go over the dimensions real quick. That, if you go into and see the pictures of Unit One, poor handwriting, but it's, you could see the hallway from the point of the, I'm not sure what you call it, the end of the railing for the stairwell is two feet. It's very hard for you to get around anything regarding that into Unit One. That hallway is five feet. That, the horizontally comes out six feet in which that doorway has minimal space to open for the stairwell. We'll go up the stairwell to Unit Three and Two. You could see that there's three feet of access, I guess vertically, and six feet horizontally. You can't really see this and I couldn't show it in the pictures, but, or in this, these diagrams, but you can see, I know Pete took some more pictures and stuff, but it's like kind of at a forty-five degree angle in which it's harder to get even more space when you're moving like large units like sofas and stuff like that. And, I mean, yeah, that, thank you for your consideration on this request.
Thank you very much. All right. Pete, does staff need, want to make any comments related to this request?
Yes, I'll just make a few brief comments. So as, as far as short-term rentals go, the, the city does look at short-term rentals as a form of lodging, like a hotel or a motel. And I mentioned that in the staff report. Where do we allow those in the city? All the downtown zone districts, D-one, D-two, D-three, the live-work one and two districts, the node districts, the CC-two and the CC, so the commercial community zone districts, and then the manufacturing zone districts, M-one and M-two. So those are all zone districts where lodging-type uses are permitted by right. In the residential zone districts, short-term rentals are not permitted. They're not a special use either. So in this particular case, the property is in the RM fifteen residential multi, multi-dwelling zone district. And, you know, I tried to, you know, lay out some points in the findings of the staff report, you know, that the, you know, ordinance doesn't deprive practical use of the property because it can be used as three rental units. And it has been for at least the last twenty-five years. You know, there are other structures of similar age in that neighborhood. I don't know if they have stairwells like this or not, but there's definitely other structures of similar age. And, you know, there, there are conforming alternatives. You know, the, the second floor has two units that could be pre-furnished and rented out pre-furnished. The stairwell, you know, where it may be expensive, this, the staircase could be modified to be more user-friendly for getting items up to those second units. So, yeah, staff did not indicate support for this variance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now I will open the public hearing and invite those in the, in the room to speak in favor. There are none. Nobody's out there going to speak against it either. Pete better hurry because I'm going to say, are there any call-in comments?
And we're opening up the phone line this evening for this case. I have no phone calls waiting. So no, no call-ins for this particular case tonight.
Thank you. That will close the public hearing portion of this request. Do we need any specific discussion before I ask for the motion on a finding of fact? Probably not. If so, can somebody please make a motion on the finding of fact?
I'll make a motion for the finding of fact.
Uh, no, I think Allison was doing it.
Okay, I second. I move that the finding of facts for 132 Reed Street shall include all information included in the notice of public hearing date, April twenty-three, 2025, and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Ninety-four notices of public hearing were sent and zero responses were received. A public hearing was held before the board. Public comments were accepted, as were additional documents and voice message, or not, no voice messages or additional documents were provided. In addition, the facts presented whether there were unnecessary hardships based on special circumstances. The owner, Christopher Patch, acquired this hardship. There's a very narrow stairway with dimensions and angles that make it very difficult for long-term rentals because of moving in and out with their furniture and their items. There doesn't, there's no impact. He states that there's no impact to the neighborhood and no exterior changes to be made. The owner lives in one of the units and had to move the couch via balcony. And there were holes created in walls when moving furniture through the stairwell. Pete noted that there are conforming alternatives. Unit modification is possible. And there were no shared facts about whether there would be effects on adjacent land. But short-term rentals are not allowed in the RM fifteen zone. That concludes my finding of fact.
Thank you. I believe Tony was going to second that.
I second that finding of fact.
Thank you. I suspect we should just take a vote on the finding of fact. So everybody in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No, that finding of fact is adopted. All right, can somebody make a motion regarding the actual request itself?
I motion to approve the request.
And how about a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you. All right, now we'll discuss it. Anybody got any questions for the applicant or for staff on this one?
I have a question for Pete. Pete, do you know if the zoning ordinance is going to change for the short-term rental?
We have not scheduled those discussions yet. I presume that will be 2026 at this point before we will be looking at having public meetings to talk about changes to the residential zone districts.
Thank you.
To include short-term rentals?
Well, yes, the discussion will, yeah, will include all of the above. Like, you know, it will talk about, you know, the distribution of single-dwelling zoning versus multi-dwelling zoning, as well as, you know, where and in what's, under what circumstances short-term rentals are, you know, should be permissible. So, so yes, we'll be looking at, you know, at everything.
Would it make a difference on a short-term rental if it was just the entire property was a short-term rental? As one package? Like if you were doing an Airbnb for a whole house, would that be different under the zoning than three or two short-term rentals or whatever in a building?
I understand. No, it would be the same.
Okay.
Because, you know, that, you know, that lodging category is, is less than thirty days is what falls into the lodging category.
Okay. And it's allowed, that's allowed in some zones right now, not allowed in others?
Correct, yeah. In, in the, you know, non-residential zones. And there's certain uses, like rooming houses, that are allowed in certain residential zone districts with special use, which goes through the planning commission for review and approval. But, but that, you know, again, that would, you know, would not include short-term rentals.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions for Pete or the staff? Go for it.
So, following up on that question then. So a year from now, possibly it would be a different set of circumstances confronting this applicant.
You know, I don't know for sure if it'll be a different set of circumstances. I mean, we do get complaints annually about short-term rentals and disruptive behavior. And we have to take enforcement action. I mean, there, there, you know, there's only usually a handful of these a year that we deal with. But, you know, it, it, there'll be, I think when we have those public meetings, there'll be, you know, there'll be two different camps that'll have, you know, be making comments.
Thanks.
And from our board, if we give approval for short-term in this instance, that's just going to carry on with the property forever, essentially?
Yes.
So, excellent, thank you. Anybody else want to speak on it?
I'm, I'm a yes.
You're a yes in favor?
Totally.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm on the opposite side of that fence and I'm not going to belabor it. I, I, I think that the staff report especially. Numbers, what, one and two, I think it are, think it is, are kind of just right on the money for me. And I'm not going to re, re-catch or restate them other than to say, I adopt that and I think it's, it's right. So I'm going to be a no.
Can you read it out?
Sure. The, the two things are, one, the literal interpretation and enforcement of the terms of the provisions of this ordinance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Would deprive the applicant for all practical purposes from using the property for a limited use identified in the zoning ordinance. I didn't need to like cut off the rest of that. I needed to actually read the rest of it. And their findings or their recommendation was the provisions of the ordinance do not deprive the applicant of practical use of the property. Current uses of the property is three residential units. Rental records found show that this has been utilized as a three-unit rental for the past twenty-five years. It would just continue in its current use as a, as a longer-term rental facility. And then number two, that there is an unnecessary hardship based on special circumstances or conditions peculiar to the land or structure. And the special circumstances, according to the staff report cited by the applicant, are related to the structure, specifically a narrow stairwell to the second floor. The structure, and here's the key though. This structure and many others in the neighborhood were built in the early nineteen hundreds. Most were constructed as single-family homes and later converted to multi-unit rentals. To me, I live in one of these type of homes. They all have narrow stairwells. They all have weird ceilings. Like that's, it's just the, the nature of the home and it can still continue to be used for what it's being used now. It could be, there are maybe easier ways that you could use it than this, but that's not a, a special circumstance or unnecessary hardship to me. So I'm a no.
I have another question for the applicant.
Yeah.
Is the property certified?
Uh, well, is it as a rental?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I just got it certified about two months ago. I think it's, is it twenty-eight weeks or? But I got the rental certification about a month ago, two months ago. So it is certified as a rental. That stairwell is obviously grandfathered in. I don't even think it'd be possible, or it would be able to pass with this stairwell. Now, it's just, like Mr. Holer said, it's an older building, so.
Okay. The certification is as a three-unit?
Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
I think we need more. I think we need more types of housing to be available to our constituency, and I support this. I think that in the midst of this housing crisis, you know, for us to not consider, like, the most innovative and expansive ways to think through how to support our community being housed when they want to be housed. You know, I think that that should be taken under consideration and advisement.
I do want to say, I agree with that sentiment. I, I often wind up being sort of the bad guy, not, not outwardly the bad guy, but I, I wind up painting myself into the position of being the bad guy, when I actually agree with the ends that people are trying to accomplish. This is just one of those where, and I think on all of them, where we have to remember the standards we're supposed to apply and kind of work within those, and if you can, if, this is not to attack you or anything.
No, no.
It's just, so, so that's why I try to, that's why my votes sometime, sometimes run counter to my preferences for the way things should go, is because the standards are what they are, and it's not our job or my job to just reject them, because I disagree with what they're trying to do or the ends. And I'm not by any means saying you are.
No, no. I don't think that, I, and you're not a bad guy at all. I just, I always take into consideration that slavery used to be legal, number one, and so, you know, I, I'm always able and willing to challenge whatever the, the written law is in this country, number one. But number two, I think that a narrow stairwell, that's justification enough for me to reconsider this. So, yeah, that's, that's just my opinion about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
How would a pre-furnished rental unit be any different in turn, than a long-term rental unit, when you have to move furniture in and out, especially, and probably more often with a short-term rental?
Can I ask that one more time? I appreciate it.
How would a pre-furnished rental, short-term rental unit alleviate the challenge of the narrow stairwell and having to move furniture in and out?
So, when you have an Airbnb, I mean, most of them are pre-furnished. When I was doing my education at Western, I did a couple of Airbnbs, and every one of them was very conveniently furnished for me. Also, this building is close to Western Michigan University, in which the college students could indulge in. But to answer your question, how does this make it a bitter situation? You can keep that furniture, furniture in there. Also, I'd like to add, in that area off of Reed Street, it can be sometimes less than favorable tendency. I've lived there for two months. It's a very busy street. I've had to do work with people. I mean, I have a tenant right now who I pretty much put on a payment plan every month so he can pay. I have a guy who previously lived in the unit that I'm living in now. I had to get him out because of certain political situations that closed off the funding to his program so he could pay his rent. He was doing assistance for his brother. So situationally, it is hard for, and especially that area, for them to consistently pay rent. And I think it'd be more beneficial economically for us to have a, less people moving in and out and have a pre-furnished apartment, and, you know, I guess arguably, people would be moving in and out of that, but it'd be less damage to the narrow stairway of the property.
Yeah. Understand you. We understand you. Thank you.
Thank you. Shall we just move on to the vote, unless anybody's really got to say something else? You can or not. Pete, why don't you take the vote? So the motion was to approve the request. There was a second. There we go.
Yep, and we'll, we'll start at the far end of the dais. Sylvester?
No.
Work?
No.
Holder?
Uh, no.
Harrington?
Yes.
McReynolds?
Yes.
Um. No.
So by, I believe my vote, the count there is four-two, the request is denied. Thank you for coming out tonight, Mr. Patch, as always. All right, so Pete, we did not get applicant number one to appear. I assume that we just get the Kalamazoo, City of Kalamazoo Public Services Department to reschedule this?
Yes, yes. We'll, we'll move item number one, four-three-three Reed Avenue, to the June meeting, and I'll reach out to the consultant and the public services staff and make sure we get them back on track. I, you know, I don't, I'm not aware of anything changing with the project, so, but, yeah, if everything is still moving forward, then we'll, we'll just, we'll do that at one in June, and that's how we handle it.
Sounds like a plan. All right, that's all for the public hearings and all of that. Action items, volunteers for interview committee.
I'd love to.
I would too.
Okay, thank you.
You know who is coming through.
If you need three or whatever, I would also volunteer.
Okay, that would be nice to have the board chair there, okay? Thank you, Mr. Holder.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, so I told the, the one applicant, I said, we're going to, we're going to, you know, wait two more weeks, and then I'll reach back out to him and talk to him about interviews. So hopefully, we'll have another applicant at that point. And that is all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Excellent. Then we can be done. We are adjourned. Have a good evening.
All righty.
Hopefully, we did not speak too mu-